Five, so I will call to order the October 6th, 2022 regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. So if you will, rise please. If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. We have no one signed up for in-person public comment. Is there anyone online seeking recognition?
Oh my gosh. No, no. No, ma'am.
No one. Okay, we do have one digital public comment that came in before the deadline. This is from Dennis Justice 31, Tamis Lane Fletcher. I wish to extend my gratitude for your decision to add pickleball courts at Patton Park. As you know, I was unable to attend in person due to a memorial drive to visit my late wife's grave. Today is what would have been her 50th birthday. I do not know all the details yet, being away from the meeting. I am going by what I read in the Hendersonville Lightning. I do not know if the courts will be lighted, the dimensions, are the basketball courts being taken away, et cetera. I'm requesting that somebody who knows contact me, please. I had urged for a wheelchair-friendly court, and each pickleball project should have at least one before somebody in Raleigh or Washington decides to pursue amending the Americans with Disability Acts to require all local governments retrofit one in current pickleball projects. I do understand the decision to build two tennis courts despite my urging the county to completely reconstruct 16 courts at North Henderson, West Henderson, and the four lower courts at Jackson Park. I remember when Deets Field had a little league baseball field and that got relocated. I also appreciate reading that you are going to consider conversion of the softball park to a dog park. I cannot imagine you are doing it just because I suggested it yesterday. It seems a natural fit, and I cannot be the only person to think of it. I do wish you give an honest evaluation of whether the softball field has had enough current use to justify retiring its current function, or whether it would be repairing anything at the field would improve its use. As I stated, I truly do not like taking a sports component away unless it had truly run its course like the former racquetball court. Let me please bring attention to one related issue. There is at least one basketball goal at Sullivan Park that needs immediate repair. I also suggest adding lighting. My view on Fletcher's project is unchanged. I do not think we need a tennis court in that project. I cannot see why taxpayers should finance new courts when we should reconstruct 16 damaged courts we already have. I do not necessarily think Fletcher should just keep up with the Joneses and just have six pickleball courts instead of three. Of course, I'm suggesting the first court be a wheelchair-friendly court, but that is not my decision. I'm asking you to please forward any information to Jackson at Fletcher Park and Recreation. I am satisfied that even if they don't go with my input, they are at least taking it seriously. Ultimately, despite what any of us optimistically state in any public meeting, this is still an audition. What you approved is honestly the maximum of that audition, and the pickleball courts are a long time coming. I congratulate the pickleball community and urge them to work at least 10 times as hard on a complex because that is what will be needed to make it happen. The only publicly owned land in the county that may work, in my opinion, is the site next to Meritor in Fletcher. I'm asking council to please publicly urge Henderson County and Fletcher to commission a disability study for it. One final tangent, if you happen to have a cluster of four courts, perhaps four different color schemes to represent the Four Seasons might be a novel idea for the city of Four Seasons. Just a suggestion. Again, I thank you. Okay. So pickleball courts are underway. Okay, consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda this evening? If not, a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
This is not the point where we move it.
No, next one.
I didn't think so. Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the agenda as presented say aye. Those opposed say no. Ayes have it, and we have the agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anything on consent agenda that someone would like to have moved to the regular agenda so it can be discussed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would ask that letter A, the special event Christmas parade, be moved to the regular agenda for discussion.
Okay, I would suggest, because a couple people very interested have a meeting they have to get to later, let's do that under item six, presentations. Make that E, the parade. Anything else anyone would like moved? Or a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and all of those items are approved. All right, now we have presentations. We have several special activities that we are recognizing this month, and so I will just go down the list. I'm going to move out in front here. First is Fire Prevention Week. And who is going to have to repeat this? Right in the middle. Okay. This is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week 2022. Whereas, the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all living in and visiting Hendersonville, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,580 people in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and Hendersonville's residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Hendersonville's residents, who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan, are more prepared and are therefore more likely to survive a fire, residents should practice their home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night. And whereas Hendersonville's residents will make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all their family's members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half and should be installed in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. When the smoke alarm sounds, every occupant of the home should respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas Hendersonville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, our residents are responsive to public education measures and can take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", works to educate everyone about simple but important actions they can take, including preparing a home fire escape plan to keep ourselves and those around them safe from home fires. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the city of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Hendersonville. And I urge all citizens to plan and practice a home fire escape and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Hendersonville and surrounding area fire and emergency services. There you go. Would you like to say something?
I just appreciate everyone's support when it comes to fire safety. It's a job for all of us, and I really appreciate the support of council, support of city management, support of fire chief, due to the efforts that we put out there every single day to make Hendersonville a safer city. So we appreciate all of your help.
We appreciate the work that you do. Okay, next, American Pharmacists Month. Come on. Sure, anyone else?
Um, could I get my phone?
Definitely, I'll take it. Okay. All right. And Ari?
Yes, Ari.
Ari, okay. This is for American Pharmacists Month 2022. Whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest of the health professions devoted to maintaining the health and well-being of all people. And whereas, the Wingate University School of Pharmacy Hendersonville, North Carolina campus contributes to over 300,000 licensed pharmacists in the United States who provide services to assure the rational and safe use of all medications. And whereas, the use of medication as a cost-effective alternative to more expensive medical procedures is becoming a major force in moderating overall healthcare costs. And whereas, these powerful medications require greater attention regarding the way they are used by different patient population groups, both clinically and demographically. And whereas, it's important that all users of prescription and non-prescription medications and/or their caregivers be knowledgeable about and share responsibility for their own drug therapy. And whereas, pharmacists provide patients with expertise, knowledge, and accessibility, all crucial factors to support improvement in our nation's public health, and have helped combat the COVID-19 pandemic over the past two years. And whereas, pharmacists are utilized to the full capacity of their license with recent expansions in practice, to include prescribing and providing oral contraceptives, long-acting injectables, nicotine replacement products, and continue to have a broadening role in improving access to high-quality healthcare. And whereas, pharmacists are best positioned to be the healthcare professionals to help patients improve adherence to their medication and provide patient care services that ensure optimal medication therapy outcomes. And whereas, the city of Hendersonville is honored to have the students of Wingate University School of Pharmacy, as they enjoy the state-of-the-art facility, to further their education in Hendersonville, a place they can call home, and to express our appreciation for fulfilling their mission to give back and serve this community with both student pharmacies and pharmacy graduates. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the city of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as American Pharmacists Month in the city of Hendersonville, and commend its observance to all citizens. There you go. Would you like to say something?
Thank you. And we'll thank you to provide as high-quality patient care as our training has taught us.
Thank you. All right. Joseph, anyone want to come up with you?
My staff and board of directors join me.
You all come up.
Surprise, surprise.
Glad to have you all here. All right. So this is a proclamation for the 15th anniversary of the Hands-on Children's Museum. Whereas, the Board of Directors, staff, volunteers, and children of Hendersonville and Western North Carolina celebrate the 15th anniversary of Hands-on Children's Museum. And whereas, the Children's Museum has served over 500,000 people throughout Western North Carolina since opening its doors in 2007, contributing significantly to the economic impact of Hendersonville tourism and quality of life for families with children. And whereas, in 2017, the Children's Museum, in partnership with the community, developed a collective vision to expand the Children's Museum's physical presence and its educational programs and exhibit offerings. And in 2021, the Children's Museum and the city of Hendersonville established a public-private partnership to develop the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, a celebration of the culture and history of Black, Indigenous, and people of color through inclusive learning experiences. And whereas, after completing a fundraising campaign, the Children's Museum broke ground in 2021 for a major facility renovation and expansion to develop a world-class 13,000-square-foot museum experience for the children of Hendersonville and Western North Carolina. The museum successfully completed its renovations and expansions in 2022, reopening its doors to the community with record museum attendance and participation in STEM and arts programming. And whereas, the Hands-on Children's Museum is an integral part of Henderson County's nonprofit network, inspiring learners of all ages to realize their full potential in the areas of STEM, art, literacy, history, and culture through interactive learning experiences. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the city council of the city of Hendersonville, do hereby recognize the Hands-on Children's Museum on the occasion of their 15th anniversary for their many years of service to community, and I thank them for their commitment to make our city a great place to live, work, and play. I'm sure you will take the opportunity to say something.
A few words. So first, we call upon us on behalf of our staff, the board of directors, and children we serve. We just want to thank the city of Hendersonville and the citizens of Hendersonville and Western North Carolina for supporting our institution. The idea of Hands-on started out as a dream that grew and grew into a beautiful reality that has evolved into a 13,000-square-foot experience for our community. We're happy to be here and look forward to serving the community more, and just like to take a moment to let everyone know that we have a new exhibit on display that celebrates Dia de los Meritos, and we encourage you to come visit at the People's Museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here. And then we have one final presentation, and that is a proclamation of distinction. City manager Connet.
Uh-uh. Come on.
You've got to come in here.
Let's go. Let's go. Oh, look at that picture. Yes, sir.
Come on in here.
What in the world?
Whereas, John Connet has been the city manager of the city of Hendersonville since May of 2013. And whereas, prior to becoming city manager for the city of Hendersonville, he served as the city manager of Clinton, North Carolina for 11 years, town manager of Winterville, North Carolina for three years, and worked for the city of Hickory for seven years as risk manager and planner for a total of 30 years of dedicated service to local government. And whereas, Mr. Connet has distinguished himself with his many accomplishments, including the following. He currently serves as an adjunct professor at Western Carolina University's Master of Public Affairs program. He's a credentialed member of the International City-and-County Manager Association. He's a member and past president of the North Carolina City and County Manager Association. He currently serves on the Western Carolina University Alumni Association Board of Directors. He has previously served on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors. He's an Eagle Scout and 2018 North Carolina Main Street Champion. He's a recipient of the Robert L. Shepherd Excellence in Local Government Award. And whereas, in recognition of his commitment to public service, John was awarded a 30-year Service Award from the International City and County Management Association at the 2022 ICMA Annual Conference held in September 2022 in Columbus, Ohio. And whereas, I Barbara Volk and the city council for the city of Hendersonville wish to recognize John Connet for his many personal and professional accomplishments and for his 30 years of dedicated service to local governments in North Carolina. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the city of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim that John Connet is a city manager of distinction. You get to say something if you want.
A couple things. First of all, everybody that knows me knows that I hate this.
That's why we didn't tell you.
Because the work that I do is for you and for the city council and for my family. I caught my daughter in a lie just because she set me up this week with some questions like, why are you asking me questions? I'll get her back. It's a pleasure to work for the city, for this community, for this council, and 30 years has gone like that. It's hard to believe how quick it's gone, and I'll look for a few more years before I ride out into the sunset, but thank you very much, and I appreciate everything, and this is very, very nice. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move the kickoff to the side for now, and everyone can help themselves as they're leaving to get a really big peddle plaque. Yes. Okay.
Mayor, could I grab one photo of city council and John? The table's fine to keep going. We'll just get a group photo. Yeah, cake and go.
And then?
Yeah, we'd like to get a couple. How about John and city council and mayor first, and then family photo after.
That's all right.
Perfect.
The phone is not up second.
Can I get one please? Ready? I'll get one please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's cool. Didn't break. All right.
You've got to go decorate, don't you?
Go get your cake.
Should we put it over there for people to eat some of these rather than here? If they're for them.
They're probably not going to sit around the whole time.
Let's put it over there at that door.
Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of peddlers eating. I mean, John does like to throw baked goods on the ground. Yeah. Yeah, don't let the table, like, collapse. It's going to be fine.
It's well-deserved.
Very well-deserved.
All right. Okay. Thank you for all the people who assisted in this presentation. And there were a lot. Okay, to go back to the printed agenda, special event policy and fee update. Who's doing that one?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So today I'm going to talk a little bit about some proposed changes to our special event fee and policy. The city's Special Event Committee, which includes representatives from police, fire, public works, and community development, have been talking about the special event policy and updates for the past year or so. We've presented some ideas to the downtown advisory board, but we wanted to get some feedback from you all or some consideration from you all before we go farther into developing some updates to the policy. So some of the things that we're going to talk about are just a review of what the costs are of doing events, some proposed fee changes, as well as next steps. First, I want to talk about the benefits of events before we go any farther into things. We love having events downtown. It's an important thing for marketing and promoting our downtown as a great place to be and a great place for people to be. In addition, a lot of our downtown events support downtown businesses specifically on the days of the events from big sales, which then generates sales tax revenue to the city, and then some passive economic impact, which includes just overall marketing and promotion of our district as a great place. We all know that. We love it, and that adds to the community value and pride. So our current annual events, this might not be totally comprehensive, but it should be pretty close. These are the ones who provide applications year after year. We've got our large events, which are usually multi-day and cover all of Main Street, which are Apple Festival, Garden Jubilee, and Ardell Main. And then we have several events that are single-day with the street closed and with avenues open, so the cross streets are open on these, which are Tales in Town, Motorama, which is not happening this year, Antique and Vintage Show has the avenues open, and then Treat Street, we do close the avenues. In addition, we have several single-day events, which are one or two block closures, including events that are at the Courthouse Square, Rhythm &amp; Brews, Music on Main when they have the car show, the Fourth of July event, Fiesta Hendersonville, and then the holiday events. And in addition to that, we have our parades, Fourth of July, Christmas, Apple Festival, and then there are some other parades and processionals that typically go through police because they're smaller scale. So I'll have a lot of information on the slides that you might not necessarily have to read, but it's a lot for my information. So currently, on those different types of events, we have, the city provides different levels of service for that. For those big, major events like the Apple Festival and Garden Jubilee, we all know that that's a big amount of city services that are provided for that, just to make sure that downtown is safe and clean and just all-around working well for those major events that bring substantial amount of people to downtown. Then we have the full-street closure festivals like Ardell Main, which does close all of Main Street but uses slightly less city services because of the quantity of people who come to that. Then we have the events that have the avenues open that are, again, smaller in scale because we leave the avenues open for traffic flow. There's typically less people and have less impact on city services. Then we have our parades, which are largely police and public works additional services just to make sure that they're safe events. And then our smaller events, those one or two block closures like Rhythm &amp; Brews and Races, they close fewer streets, smaller level of service. Most of those events do pay some amount for those services, like electrical, power, water, off-duty police officers. And then Courthouse Square closures, which either just close the courthouse block or parking on the courthouse block, and those are pretty minimal as far as impact. So I asked public works if they could provide some examples of what the true cost of events are, and so they pulled their work order information for us, just to give an idea of how the different barricades and the different uses that we have impact city expenses. So when I say on their regular barricades, those are the Sawhorse barricades, just the white ones, and then water barricades are the big orange ones. So just the cost of public works alone to load and unload the barricades for events, for a one-block event, $312. And so they pulled their work order information for us just to give an idea of how the different barricades and the different uses that we have impact city expenses. So when I say on their regular barricades, those are the Sawhorse barricades, just the white ones. And then water barricades are the big orange ones. So just the cost of Public Works alone to load and unload the barricades for events, for a one-block event, $312 for the Sawhorse barricades. And then all the way down to a two-block event with water barricades is about $750 in labor costs. Then going down to the Apple Festival, which is something we all know, is a big impact on the city as far as public services. Alternately, a big impact on the city as far as benefits that it provides. The overtime or the labor and overtime in 2021, with overtime was $68,509, and without overtime was $53,050. Further, I had them just do a little bit more, get a little bit better understanding of the barricades. And these are for the water barricades filled. And I'll get to safety here in a few minutes. So the total cost just alone on setting up and breaking down the barricades with water is about $2,300 for a big event like the Apple Festival. Safety. So that's a very, very important part as far as our downtown events goes. We would never want to have a tragic event happen at any of our events. And so our police, Public Works, community development, and fire all feel very strongly about making sure that our events are safe and we need to have whatever precautions that we need to have in order to make those events safe. Sometimes our events have had the filled water barricades, sometimes they have not. And we've moved forward in the past year of making sure that the filled water barricades are more of a priority. In turn with that, that has increased the overtime and the staffing costs in order to make sure that they're done. Loading and unloading the barricades alone before even putting the water out takes basically half of a day of Public Works' time. The Sawhorse barricades that we have do not provide any safety at all for the events.
Jamie, I don't want to get you off track, but can I just make a fine point to this? So this, with what we've seen around the country over the last several years, and I just want to, for the public and for the council to understand, you know, from, we've got a couple of different perspectives as it relates to safety and barricades. The event organizers, once the barricades are full of water, I think they're probably 700 pounds apiece or, anyway, they're heavy. They're hard to be, hard to move. So it's not as convenient to move those barricades. And so not only is it staff time, but also from an event organizer, they're not as easy to move. But we've had that debate and conversation among our team and I think our public safety departments, particularly police and fire, feel that it's almost in this current world environment. And whether it's an intentional action or actor or unintentional, that the barriers are really provide that first level of protection for folks in the street. And it is, they are somewhat inconvenient, but we feel like, from a city perspective, it's something that we really should be doing. And we're looking at other types of barricades that may be less staff time, but everything is, from a cost thing, is, cost point of view is very expensive. And so the water barricades have been the ones that we found the most cost-effective at this point. But from a labor standpoint and from an organizer standpoint, there are some trade-offs to that. So I just want to make a point that not everybody likes the water barricades, but from the city's perspective, and it really is, it'll come down to the policy decision later for the council if you want us to change anything we're doing. But at this point, we have just taken it upon ourselves to feel like this is going to be the way that we protect people on Main Street. Sorry, Jamie.
Oh, that actually gets me to my next slide. And you don't have to read all of that. That's just, again, for my information. So these are some solutions that we've looked at. These AST barricades that you see there are something that police and Public Works have looked at. They're not cheap, which nothing is. And there are some pros and cons to them. I believe they're about $1,400 apiece. And a piece, I mean, like, where it has that one L shape, that's one piece. So that's like 10 pieces right there. So $1,400 times 10. And also, that would require a trailer in order to move those. And that goes into what Mr. Connet was talking about as far as the logistics for events. A lot of times, our events will move the barricades to load and unload for vendors, and they would not have the ability to do that with these. Some other options that we've talked about for some of the smaller event closures are bringing in some city vehicles, like dump truck or heavy vehicles, to use those as additional barricades, which would be easier to move potentially. The other option that we'd love to have are some removable or retractable bollards. We do have those as a part of the Seventh Avenue Streetscape for Maple Street. Since we close that street every week during the summertime, we felt like that was a good place to try this out and see if it's something that could work. Tom Wooton and Public Works have kind of priced out how the cost of installation would be on Main Street. And it would be about $30,000 per lane closure. So that's like Main Street avenues. So $30,000, basically four, times four, per block or per intersection. So total cost for Main Street would be about $1 million.
And that would include buying the bollards and putting the little thing in the ground?
Yeah, that would include like the concrete and the installation and everything per lane. Per lane, per block. So, long-term, we'll see how that goes. So then, kind of moving back to our fee structure and our current fee structure, we found that, so currently, all of our events are a vendor-based fee structure. So first, only events that have vendors pay a fee unless they use electricity. So events that do not have any vendors do not pay anything for events. So they have all of the cost of barricades and things coming in, but no, no fee is paid to the city for those. Our retail vendor fee is $15, single food day, $30, multi-food day is $55, times the number of days. And that was, the food vendors are increased because of the cost of cleanup and the trash is a result of that. Our electrical fees, there's some calculations that come with that. And then water is based off of use, and the water department comes in and checks the meters on that. Additionally, events do, event organizers do incur additional fees by paying off-duty police and fire for most events. So issues with our current fee structure. We did review event fees in other cities in North Carolina and South Carolina just to see what other places were doing. None of them are doing vendor fees. They're doing more of a flat rate or some type of mixture of fees.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the vendor fees, is the, I'll use the Apple Festival. Does the Apple Festival collect all those and then pay us?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not involved in trying to chase people around for money?
No, no, yeah. They basically add that into their vendor fee cost that they charge their vendors.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that include the, like, the city parks? Because you have some events that take place in the city parks as well.
How, we've got it currently, yeah, it does. That kind of adds to the tracking of vendor fees. And event fees is a little difficult for staff to do, especially for events. And so we've been trying to figure that out since the events came under downtown in the reorganization of the Community Development Department, which is why we're talking about today. And so then other event organizers or other cities have had fees based off of street closure, based off of per barricade and other types of calculations. So what we came up with, so this is going to be a summary, and then I'll go into a little bit more detail. So what we would like to do is standardize our street closures and event fees based off of just a few different types. And so what that does is one street closure or one type of street closure provides what this level of services, this number of extra trash cans, this number of extra city services. And that also requires the same amount of public safety across the board. So that way, anytime an event comes that has the same expectations, we're providing the same amount of public services. Additionally, we'd like to go ahead and keep that food vendor fee because of the additional mess and waste that's a result of that. In addition, we always like to encourage people who come to events to go to our downtown restaurants. So that kind of helps offset. Additionally, we'd like to do a $25 application fee just to make sure that people submit full applications. And it covers the additional time or covers some amount of time that we work with the event organizers. We'd like to keep the water and electrical usage basically the same because that's more or less an in-and-out type of rate.
Can you get back one?
Yeah.
The three types of major Main Street event closures, that would be whether there are vendors or not?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would remove the vendor fee, except, unless they have food vendors. And so then it would just be-
Right, but this will be, everybody pays to put the, unless we choose otherwise, pays to put the water barricades up?
Right.
Okay.
So then we've got, I've got it broken up into classes. So the Class A type of closure, and I'll have a chart here in a minute that shows what they currently pay and what they'll look like under this new fee structure. So the Class A closure, we have at $700 a day. This is your Apple Festival and your Garden Jubilee. That not only closes all of Main Street, but we know takes extra cleanup as far as Public Works, extra resources as far as the city goes. A lot of these events close the street the day before the event starts as far as setup. And so we have a half of, half a day, half a fee. A Class B closure at $450 a day. These are events that close all of Main Street but have less city services, like an Ardeno Main. And then Class C, and this is where we've talked about from the downtown advisory board, and I'd be interested in additional feedback as well, is that full Main Street closure but keeping the avenues open. That's what we've done for Antique and Vintage Show and recommended for Tales in Town. And the reason behind that is a lot of our downtown businesses like having the cross streets open as far as traffic flow. Police have liked that because it's easier to access roads, they can get there faster. But there are some safety concerns on the flip side of that.
The Class A fee, that would be to close the entire Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all of those would be the entire-
That's not per block. That is the whole street?
No, yeah, the whole block, whole street, not block.
Okay.
Then that gets down to the smaller events. Class D would be, we would not want to close, so either close all of Main Street or one or two blocks. Because then if we close three or four blocks and leave a block here or there open, there gets some-
Chaos.
Yeah. So we'd prefer not to do more than two block, either two blocks or all. And so we've got a two-block or one-block closure, basically per block, cost of $75. That would be like the Courthouse Square events, Rhythm &amp; Brews, events like that. Then we have a lot of events that request just parking spaces for the Courthouse Plaza, which costs very minimal amount of staff time. But eventually, there will be parking meters there, so there will be a loss of parking with that. Other, and we haven't fully determined the fees as what would fall in the other, but that would be for events that don't really fit into the other categories but need trash or recycling cans brought and garbage picked up and use of electricity or water. And that would just be per use. Okay, and so how this will look for events. So we took what the current fees are that events pay and compare it to what this new proposal would do. This is at the $700, or at the rates that I just described. So for some events, it would be possibly a decrease in fees, and for some events, it would be an increase. For the Apple Festival, it would be an increase in about $2,000. For Garden Jubilee, Ardeno Main, and Antique and Vintage, it may be a decrease. And that's where we can kind of work around on that amount that we would like to do for the closures of the classes. Antique and Vintage is a pretty substantial decrease. And that would be if we would want to incentivize the avenues open or not. And that's something that's up for discussion. Events that haven't paid anything in the past, events that closed the courthouse block, are races. They haven't paid anything in the past. And so that would give them some amount that they would be required to pay as a result. Parades are a little bit of a, up in the air. They are a pretty big cost to the city, but parades do have, you know, moving near town, you have, usually have a Christmas parade and usually have a Fourth of July parade. So that would be something that would be, need to be considered if the cost of that would want to be something that we would want to consider.
For the Apple Festival, I'm assuming the cost they play, they pay include Monday? So in other words, that parade is sort of covered in their fees. Is that right?
It would, unless we charged a fee for parades.
But I mean, they've already, haven't they paid through Monday to have the street, like, kept?
Yeah. And where it's not calculated in here for parades, because the cost would be for the Apple Festival parade and for the, I thought I had this here, but I guess I didn't, the thought for the Apple Festival parade and the Christmas parade as far as police time, because it's all overtime officers, is roughly about $1,900. That's our overtime cost for police. We've never charged anything for parades in the past, though. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
So what is, just to clarify for everybody in the room, so what's not shown on here is the separate police cost? Because that's not, that would be, they would, the police would be paid separately, correct? So that, that cost is in addition to what we see on the screen?
Yes. So for the event organizers, except I believe the Apple Festival, the organizers who pay off-duty police officers. So take the fees that Garden Jubilee, Ardeno Main, Antique and Vintage, any of them that would require off-duty officers. And that is $45 an hour for the daytime and then $55 an hour for nighttime or alcohol events. So could add anywhere between $200 to $500 or $600 that the event organizers would be paying for off-duty officers and then off-duty fire as well is what some of them pay for. We've been working with the police on trying to figure out what that standard is for off-duty officers. I think that might be on my next slides. But that, they're still working on calculating what that will be. What I have down at the bottom is an alternate. If we would want to make it a higher range on fees, making the Class A closure $1,000, Class B $700, Class C $450. So then that would be an increase in the revenue that's brought in. This, I didn't, so this is, so currently for police. So police, we have off-duty officers for many of our events. And our current special event policy has a pretty broad range as far as what events require officers. This was adopted probably eight or nine years ago. And so the police definitely want to update that to have more officers required to be on duty for events. Because currently, the special event policy allows up to 10,000 people at a special event without requiring off-duty officers. They're currently, as I said, they're currently reviewing policies and creating some type of calculation off of the, sorry, creating a calculation off of the number of people in the area that they'll be in. Because some events don't have as many officers. So the event cost that would increase for organizers, event fees, we would have, potentially have an increase that they would have to pay. Insurance, that's something that event organizers are facing a lot right now, is an increase in insurance costs. I know for the Friends of Downtown, our insurance increased probably about 15% last year just because of the nature of the world right now. And then a potential increase in off-duty officers. We'd like to consider or offer a consideration of some events that may be an exception to fees. And that would be what I would consider, community events, like- fees, and that would be what I would consider, community events, like holidays, Treat Street, tree lighting, parades, we could consider, the Turkey Trot, which is a city event, Fourth of July, which is a holiday event. And then as a note, the farmer's market, if that were to apply on a daily closure of that, it would not be possible to do the farmer's market on Maple Street. We also don't require any public works time during the day for the farmer's market, it's all done in-house, as far as bringing out barricades for that. All of those events that I have there would fall under either traditional holiday events, events sponsored by the city, or events that would be produced by the Friends of Downtown. So where we are and where we'd like to go, I'd like to see if any, if you'd like to think about it, or let me know, or let me know today, or at any time, feedback on what you all think about this, and then we'll review after talking with you guys about, with the Downtown Advisory Board, we'd like to complete the policy revisions by the end of this year, because what we'd like to do is have that fee schedule updated for events for next year. Well, thank you for your time, and open it up if there's any questions or comments now.
This is probably a Brian Polly question, but is it possible to use this fee schedule and look at everything that's happened or will happen in the year 2022, and look at the events that have taken place, and look at, like, can you go back one, the slide was the ones that basically we don't charge for, I think, yeah? Look at what these events would have cost under this fee schedule, and then, these events here, if they were paying what they would cost, so that we can monetize how much city services, the cost of the city services, for example, to make all these happen? Is it possible to do that?
Yeah, we could do that.
I'd like to see that, at least before we vote on something.
And that, the only kind of open air is, is the one for parades, since we don't have any type of fee in place for that, on the proposed amount, so if we'd like to consider any type of fee for the parades, I don't even know what that would be.
Well, I mean, I guess my request is, we certainly put up barricades, so whatever that would be, if we're not a parade.
Okay.
Figure out what that cost would be.
Yeah, we can do that.
Any questions, comments?
All right, thank you for your time.
We'll think about that one.
Yeah, there's a lot to consider on that, because I would just add that we do not want it to make it difficult for events to happen, but we also want to account for the cost of city services that are a part of that.
And we want our event organizers to understand there are production costs associated with the city that we're incurring, and so...
I'm not laughing at you, Jan, sorry, I feel like I'm in high school.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. Speaking of events, parade.
I think we have some people that are about to walk out, and I just want to remind them to grab cake before they...
Please, 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 please grab cake.
If you were waiting to hear about the parade.
Gabe. I gotta talk to him.
Okay.
One of those guys is Gabe.
Okay.
So, speaking about events and parades, the Hendersonville Merchants Association had talked to us and presented to the Downtown Advisory Board about moving the Christmas Parade from the daytime to the nighttime. We had reviewed that at the Special Events Committee and at the Downtown Advisory Board, and between police, public works, fire, they do not see any issues with that, and the Downtown Advisory Board unanimously liked it and approved it for the nighttime parade, they think the holiday lights that we have downtown are pretty and good to enjoy. But I'd like to invite Ms. Sandra Walker and Bessie Bright to come, who are the parade organizers.
Thank you, and we do appreciate it, and we have done this parade for several years, but we have changed this year because of a lot of requests, so we're trying to accommodate the requests. So, any questions you'd like for us?
Yes. So, I was the one that asked to have this moved, we're just doing this so it's a public awareness moment, so everybody knows what's coming. Where will the staging for this parade be?
It will be usually like the Apple Festival, at the north end of town, most of it will start at the, they'll be coming in on Oakland Street and then coming down, and then starting there at the Henderson High School near the football field. The parking lot for the, for the school will be used for a lot of the cars and vehicles in that parade, but all the bigger ones will be coming in up off of Oakland Street. And the Police Department have helped us as far as the lineup and that kind of thing.
And that's a well-lit parking lot, isn't it?
Yes, and it will be lit.
Oh, yes.
And, and as another question we had was, the football field will be used for the staging of the bands with no vehicles allowed on the new, new grass and asphalt and all around the football field. So Mr. Wilkins has agreed to, of course, we always do that, but he, that was the exception this year, that we not allow any vehicles in there to mess up their new football field, which is fine, we agree with that.
And we're hoping the lights are going to be on in there as well.
Yes, I failed to ask him yesterday, but I will, will be having the lights on the football field.
My next question, you probably can't answer, Jamie, can you come back up? For those people who are downtown that day, when will the police officers start enforcing the parking?
So the street and the avenues will close at 4:00, so no parking after 4:00 on Main Street, and that's just to get cars cleared out, to make sure it's safe for all the crowds of people. And then I'd add to that after the parade is over, because it is at nighttime, the police are going to keep the, the street closed for a little while longer, so people can disperse in a safe manner.
What time will it start?
It starts at 6:00.
6:00.
Police will be writing tickets if people are on there after 4:00.
Yes.
We just want to be clear by aware of that. That was it, thank you.
We are grateful, and we've been doing this a long time, but we feel like this is going to help the merchants on Main Street if they keep their business open. We've had a lot of positive feedback that they're looking forward to having the parade at night, and, and this year's Christmas lights is our theme.
I am very excited.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the City of Greenville does theirs at night, and it's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay.
My hometown parade was at night, too.
Should we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve the special event permit for the Hendersonville Christmas Parade.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the change in the parade, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Ayes have it, the motion carries, and let people know it's official now.
And we will have all the new information out tomorrow.
Don't forget to tell Santa.
Thank you. Don't forget to tell...
Don't forget to tell Santa.
And don't forget your cake.
All right. Okay, if anyone else would like to leave at this point, they can, otherwise we are going on to public hearings. First one is an annexation, public hearing for 2509, 2511, and 2513, Haywood Road. Cantrell, Club, and Riley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. This is a contiguous annexation petition. At the September 1st City Council meeting, you accepted the clerk certificate of sufficiency for this petition. So the background, the annexation petition was submitted by the current property owners, all three of them are listed on the screen. As you can see, it is, of course, three parcels that make up a total of 0.843 acres, so they're just basically single-family lots that would be annexed into the city, and on the right you will see the red line that depicts the current city limits line. So you'll see that it's basically contiguous on two sides, two current city limits. This is the annexation plat that accompanies this petition. If approved by you all, this would be recorded with the Henderson County Register of Deeds. I have put a motion of approval and denial on the screen, as well as in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions? All right. Again, do I ask, Madam City Attorney, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
All right, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this annexation on Haywood Road? Anyone who would like to speak? Is anyone online seeking recognition to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. In that case, we will close this public hearing. The council, either a discussion or a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I move City Council to adopt an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville to extend the corporate limits of the city as a contiguous annexation, to annex that property owned by Elizabeth Cantrell, Timothy and Lisa Club and Robin K. Riley, identified as pins 9559-96-0225, 9559-86-9361, and 9559-86-9317, finding that the standards established by North Carolina General Statute 160A-31 have been satisfied and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that annexation is ready to take place. Another annexation, this is for Duncan Terrace, Lee Ray Bergman LLC.
So, much like the last petition, this is also a contiguous annexation, and you all also accepted the certificate of sufficiency at your September 1st meeting. This annexation would encompass three parcels, depicted on the map on the right. This property is, of course, related to the Duncan Terrace Conditional Zoning District that was approved by City Council, so this is just the annexation of that property, and the property is approximately 8.67 acres. Here is also the annexation plat associated with this application, and I have approval for, motion for approval and denial in the packet and on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Madam Attorney, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the annexation on Duncan Terrace? Anyone who wishes to speak? Is anyone online seeking recognition?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Fitch?
Ken Fitch, 46 Patton Street, just a few points of clarification, because this was a contentious project. From what I understand, there has been no final site plan presented for the project, and the pending issue was the connection to sewer. Now, if the, the plan is not accepted, or the sewer connection, that cannot be executed, the annexation would still stand, is that correct? That's the only point of clarification, thank you.
Yes, yes, sir, that is correct, yes, ma'am, yes.
Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Council, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt the ordinance of the City of Hendersonville to extend the city, excuse me, corporate limits of the city as a continuous annex to annex the property owned by Lee Ray Bergman LLC, identified as pins 9569-95-7758, 9569, 955941, and 9569-96-4013, finding the standards established by the North Carolina General Statutes 1608-31 have been satisfied in that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the Duncan Terrace annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that one has been taken care of, thank you. Next, we have a rezoning, a additional zoning district for Hendersonville Connections.
Yes, good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. The application for the CZD to modify an existing C2 CZD has been brought before the city by Mo Marks of Tamara Peacock Architects, along with Charles Morris of Grace Blue Ridge Presbyterian Church. The site is a 2.46 acre site that, as mentioned, currently is owned C2 CZD, and this proposal would modify that by adding the use of the Day Center to the, the current use of the religious institution. And the project involves converting some of the existing structure for this Day Center, it'd be just under 10,000 square feet converted for that use. The current site is shown here, the upper-left photograph is just the front of the church, and the Day Center would actually not be impacting this side of the site. Upper-right is just to the right of that front of the church, this shows the property boundary on the east side. To the right is a mobile home park, and this, this area in particular that's pictured, it does not have any existing vegetation, and it's where some of the more plantings are going to be concentrated in that area. Bottom-left shows the rear of the building, this is where the Day Center conversion is going to be taking place in that part of the, of the structure, and you can see the existing vegetation that is in place along this north boundary. And then the bottom-right is the south boundary, and you see some existing fence on the, the property boundary. In the very far distance, you can see some white vinyl fence that's in place, you see the location of the drive aisles that circulate through the parking area, and on the left you see an existing wooden fence that is actually the neighboring property, and there's a duplex that is kind of surrounded by the parcels that are included in this. So to point that out, here's this kind of U-shaped site that goes around this existing duplex use. The Day Center portion of the site is back here at the rear portion of the building. And this site plan, it shows the landscape buffer that's proposed, and the parking scheme that is proposed, utilization of existing parking areas and driveways. The site plan was reviewed by the Development Review Committee, and all comments and corrections were made by the applicant or will be addressed at final site plan. As part of this, the developer has proposed some conditions, a lot of text there, and it's broken down by each, each buffer segment, and it states what, what is required within, for that buffer, and then what they've proposed within that buffer, and they're, they have asked for relief from some of the buffer standards, and so that goes through and outlines each of those buffers. Essentially, what is being requested is alternative compliance, alternative compliance to the city's buffer requirements. And this is permitted by the zoning ordinance. When an alternative plan is illustrated to be compliant with the intent of the landscaping requirements, an equal or better than normal compliance, staff believes this has been achieved through the utilization of existing vegetation, the requirement to reduce plantings within the sewer easement that's present, the grouping of additional plantings at locations that are better suited to hold additional landscaping, and sufficient landscaping at points which abut residential uses. A neighborhood compatibility meeting was required for this CZD, there were six local residents that attended that in person and one that was online, they had questions about the impact to the neighborhood and about access points to the Day Center, questions about zoning and, and what it meant, and what the potential uses could be, would it potentially intensify uses in the area and hours of operation. The current land use and zoning, the current, the subject property is currently is owned C2 CZD, sits at a transition point between the commercial zoning that... C2 CZD, sits at a transition point between the commercial zoning that runs along Spartanburg Highway and the R-15 low-density residential zoning that encompasses the single-family and two-family neighborhood located between Spartanburg Highway and Greenville Highway. East of the subject property is a mobile home community, as mentioned. The, to the north and south of subject property, abut single-family residential uses. Directly to the west is the duplex that I mentioned, and across Florence Street is a wood pallet manufacturing facility. The property is located a quarter mile from the intersection of Spartanburg Highway and Brooklyn Avenue. Spartanburg Highway is designated as a boulevard, and Brooklyn Avenue is designated as a minor thoroughfare. Taking a look at the future land use, the subject property has a split future land use designation of high-intensity neighborhood and medium-intensity neighborhood. Properties to the east and south are designated as high-intensity neighborhood, while properties to the north and west are designated as medium-intensity neighborhood. The other designation in proximity is the Neighborhood Activities Center designation, which flanks Spartanburg Highway. Florence Street is designated as a local street, and Brooklyn Avenue, as mentioned, is a minor thoroughfare. When evaluating a rezoning, the first criteria we consider is the comprehensive plan consistency. The subject property is primarily designated as high-intensity neighborhood, while a portion of it is designated as medium-intensity, staff is recommending that the entire parcel be designated as high-intensity. And for that reason, the analysis focuses on consistency with the goals and strategies outlined under high-intensity neighborhood within the comprehensive plan. The project is consistent with the goal, the future land use designation as the, as well as the secondary recommended land uses under high-intensity neighborhood state that public and institutional uses are recommended, and we consider the proposed day, day center and religious institution as public and institutional uses. The site is designated as priority infill area in the growth management map. Compatible infill development is supported by the population and housing chapter of the comp plan. This goal for compatibility is achieved through the implementation of the landscape buffers. There were no relevant goals and strategies for natural environmental resources, nor for cultural and historic resources, community facilities, or water resources, and only minor references in the transportation chapters. The second criteria is considered for rezoning relates to compatibility. In this case, there are a mix of residential, institutional, and intense commercial uses in the vicinity of the project. The third criteria is change conditions, and I'm going to read some language that was provided by the applicant. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, it has become clear that most residents who require assistance from social service agencies don't have just one need. Their needs are often complex, far-reaching, and revealed over time. With the wide geographic distribution of critical services across our community and the lack of reliable and convenient mass transportation, the Connection Center will be an answer to reducing barriers to access, accessing necessary services. And so, that is addressing change conditions. The fourth criteria, public interest, I'll also read from the applicant. The Connection Center will be a beautiful welcoming space where clients can go to address many needs in one location, including access to staff from multiple social, social service organizations, a central location for classes, groups, and services, access to necessary personal care for clients such as showers, laundry, storage, healthy snacks, and mail drop, drop-in computer and Wi-Fi access to enable online submissions of applications for housing, jobs, and other services, substance abuse, youth disorder recovery groups, and peer living room. The fifth criteria is the public facilities. This site is already currently served by all city services. The sixth criteria, effect on natural environment. In this case, the subject property features only a few existing trees, which will be preserved, and they're proposing to plant 35 new to medium, large to medium-sized canopy trees, along with a large numbers of small trees and shrubs. This item was considered by the planning board at their meeting in September, and they voted five to one to recommend adoption, and included the following comprehensive plan consistency statement as shown on the screen. And additionally, the planning board recommended the following statement of reasonableness, and provided these two points of rationale for their approval. Staff has also provided a draft language for denial, if you should choose to use that, and with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions?
The fence along, I'm not sure what that is, west, northeast, whatever, the fence along the back of the property, if the Connection Center were to take that fence down, would residents in that neighborhood, and I'm not saying they are, residents in that neighborhood be able to come to this CZD and say, no, you agreed to have a fence there? In other words, they could, the city would have to say, you'd have to put that fence back up?
You've actually pointed out a gap in my presentation. The planning board recommended that the condition, that language be added, that should, you know, fence be removed or decay and be dis, in disrepair, that it would have to be replaced by the applicant. So, if they're utilizing an existing fence that's not on their property, it's, that property owner can remove that at any time, is at their discretion. And so, that condition was agreed to by the applicant and is included in the site plan. So, it would not need to be restated in a motion, it's already present.
Sure. But, but they are required to maintain a fence?
That's correct, throughout, whether they're utilizing existing fence or installing their own fence.
Right.
It would, it would go around the entire site, except for where the access points are.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions? Would the applicant like to make any presentation or statement? You don't have to, but if you'd like to.
Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Rachel Ingram. I'm the Executive Director of the Hendersonville Connections Center. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to this presentation and to consider our application tonight. We really believe that this Connections Center is going to enhance the community, and that this is a great spot for it, that it's centrally located, that it's accessible, and that it will add to that community there in that neighborhood. We don't plan to be disruptive in any way to any of the neighbors, daytime-only operations. We just really believe in the value that this is going to have. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those, but just thank you.
Any questions?
Great.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this rezoning request? Anyone present who wishes to comment? Is there anyone online seeking recognition to comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, we'll close that public hearing. Counsel? Up to you.
I got it. Nothing needs to be added, I don't think, right? Good. Okay. I move that City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins 9578214699, 9578214924, 95782156149, and 9578215868, from C2 CZD Secondary Business Conditional Zoning District to C2 CZD Secondary Business Conditional Zoning District. Based on the site plan and the list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant and presented at this meeting, is subject to the following. Development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein, and the following permitted uses, one, a day center, and two, a religious institution. Permitted uses, hmm, nope. We have no amendments. Number three, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's 2030 comprehension plan, comprehensive plan, based on the information from the staff analysis and because. The high-density neighborhood future land use designation recommends public and institutional uses as a secondary recommended land use. Compatibility is achieved through the implementation of landscape buffers per strategy PH 1.1. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because, one, the proposed use will provide a need to the underserved in the community, and two, the proposed use will be made compatible through the implementation of landscaped buffers.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this conditional zoning district say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that has been approved. So, good luck. Looking forward to seeing, seeing it finished. Thank you. Next, we have a zoning text amendment regarding parking standards in C1. You are free to lead, unless you want to hear a little more about this.
But y'all forget your cake.
And you must take cake, sorry. If they take cake.
The cake is in celebrating the Connections Center.
Yes. I'm sure the number 30 applies to that somewhere or another, so just take some.
Okay, so this next item is for reduction of parking minimums in the C1 and the PRD zoning districts. The applicant is, again, is Mo Marks from Tamara Peacock Architects. This is a applicant-driven text amendment. The petition is actually proposed to eliminate, completely eliminate parking minimums in the C1 zoning district specifically. Through staff's review and meeting with our committees, we're proposing to reduce the minimums in the C1 and the PRD, and I'll get into the details of that, but essentially, we're looking to align the parking minimums across the city zoning districts and allow more flexibility to facilitate, facilitate development redevelopment in walkable urban locations. The map that's shown there is to give a snapshot of the parking situation in downtown, which is our C1 zoning district. This is from the 2013 parking study, where it identified 1,064 public and private parking spaces. A follow-up study from 2015 focused on public parking spaces and calculated 666 public parking spaces in the downtown core. And of course, with the Fifth Avenue parking deck, will, that'll be providing approximately 250 public parking spaces. And I just want to quickly point out that the parking solutions related to time limits, metering, and fees are all currently under review and will be brought to your attention in coming months, so that could be subject to change after tonight. This table here outlines the minimum parking standards across the zoning districts within the city, and so it's important to note that these are not parking maximums. Parking may be provided at a higher rate than what is shown here, if, you know, it's the property owner or developer, their discretion on how many parking spaces they want to provide above the minimum. You'll note that the requirement for one and a half spaces per unit is only found in the C1, which is our most walkable district, and the PRD, which is one of the, the more dense zoning districts in the city. In our more suburban zoning districts, we only require one and a half spaces if units have three or more bedrooms. These areas tend to have the greatest need for automobiles as land uses are further separated. And I'll also note at the bottom that we have guidelines in our urban residential and urban village zoning districts, which encourage a maximum parking ratio that matches the minimum, but it is not a standard or a requirement. Just for additional background, the, the zoning map here, the area in orange is the C1, so that's, that's where, that's the geographical area associated with the petition. This item went to the Legislative Committee of the Planning Board in August. We had all four members in attendance, had a good, healthy discussion about the potential impacts. A couple of key points was the consideration of a fee in lieu of parking. And just to give a brief background on that, that is not part of this proposal. It is something that has been, has gotten a favorable reaction, and maybe something that we want to consider in the future. And essentially, that would work where if a parking minimum was required and a development was to come, and could not meet that minimum parking requirement, they could pay a fee in lieu of however many numbered parking spaces there, they were short of the minimum required, and they would pay that fee into the city's parking enterprise fund, and that revenue would then be utilized to continue to provide consolidated public parking spaces throughout downtown, and, and, and help to achieve the goals of the public parking within downtown. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to try and answer them, but the, the idea was that if we eliminate parking minimums completely, but we want to do a fee in lieu in the future, there will be nothing to, to base that fee on, and so that would be a, a justifiable revenue source that would be eliminated as part of this. The other major consideration was the, the fact that parking decisions are market-driven. A developer can choose how much parking they want to provide, if they want to exceed a parking minimum, because, you know, maybe the nature, the location of their, their development. And similarly, a renter, a tenant, and owner can choose whether they feel like there's sufficient parking at a place that they may be considering to live in. And so, those choices are happening in the market and don't necessarily need to be dictated by local government. This committee, they didn't make a motion, there was general consensus, consensus for support of the staff recommendations and legislative committee recommendations that I'll, I'll be presenting shortly. This also went to the Downtown Advisory Economic Vitality Committee. They were also supportive, and it was presented to the Downtown Advisory Board, and there was no discussion, no objections from them. So, the current language I'll focus on, 5631, parking and loading, for non-residents, is current language for non-residential developments and residential developments containing fewer than five dwelling units, no off-street parking is required. For residential developments containing five or more dwelling units, off-street parking of one and one-half spaces per dwelling unit shall be provided. That is what we're working with. The applicant proposed to eliminate all minimums, so it would just read, for non-residential developments and residential developments, no off-street parking is required. It could also say, no off-street parking is required in the C1. After staff review, what, and committee consideration, what is being proposed to you is that it would read, for non-residential developments and residential developments containing fewer than five dwelling units, no off-street parking is required. For residential developments containing five or more dwelling units, off-street parking of one space per dwelling unit shall be provided. So, dropping that, that half a space requirement. In reviewing this, we also considered that to fully align all of the parking requirements, residential parking requirements across all zoning districts, that we would give this treatment to the PRD standards as well. It does have a provision that for three or more bedrooms, it would bump up to one and a half spaces. Right now, it bumps up to, from one and a half to two, and so that would bring that down to one, and then one and a half. And corresponding table within Section 65 would be updated, same information that was just presented. So, in considering this, we first take a look at the comprehensive plan consistency, really focus on the downtown core designation of the future land use map, which has a stated goal to maintain, enhance, and grow downtown as a vibrant mixed-use gathering place and cultural center with an emphasis on retail, arts, and entertainment uses. Maintain a highly urban pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design. It goes on to provide development guidelines to maintain a continuous street wall with buildings adjacent to the sidewalk, and to permit rear parking or limited side parking only. So, you see this, this push to, to not have gaps with surface parking lots within the walkable environment in the downtown core. The land use and development chapter goes on to encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas planned for high-intensity development, urges us to review zoning standards and revise as necessary to enable compatible infill projects, to minimize negative impacts from growth and land use changes on existing land uses, to consider full, a full range of short and long-term impacts when reviewing zone, zoning code changes, and to update the zoning code to ensure conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, that's, that's what we believe this would be doing here. The planning board found that the reduction of the parking minimums as presented was consistent with the goals and recommended design guidelines from the comprehensive plan.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes. Yes.
The Planning Board or the Legislative Committee?
The Planning Board. So this Legislative Committee, downtown, Planning Board.
The Planning Board made that recommendation.
All the boards and committees have been aligned on this coming to you. The Population and Housing Chapter also promotes mix of land use patterns and compatible infill. Natural and environmental resources did not have any goals, but the Cultural and Historic Resources Chapter states, "To support increased downtown housing and office density in order to support retail uses and create a 24-hour environment." There were no relevant goals from the Community Facilities and Water Resources Chapter. Transportation and Circulation added that it encourages mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses and encourage bicycle parking destinations and incorporate zoning regulations that encourage shared parking and cross-access easements. The second criteria considered is compatibility. In this case, there's a significant amount of public and private parking spaces available within the C1 zoning district. Reduction of minimum parking spaces would reduce the need for individually-owned surface parking lots and promotes opportunities for infill development, which supports the walkable urban form found in the C1 district. Additionally, the proposal reduces the cost of residential development within the C1 and the PRD zoning districts. The third criteria is changed condition. In this case, additional residential development within the Central Business District is desired by the market. The fourth criteria, public interest. Serves as a tool for economic development. By reducing parking minimums and improving opportunities for additional housing, the number of consumers living in the city's trade area increases. Additionally, reducing the amount of area required for parking helps to accommodate infill development and reduces demand for greenfield development, which is often associated with loss of farmland and forest land in suburban sprawl. The fifth criteria, public facilities. In this case, the C1 is in an urban location, is well-served by public facilities, including surface-level public parking lots and the new Fifth Avenue parking deck. The PRD districts are generally required to be located on thoroughfares, minor and major thoroughfares, which are also urbanized corridors, which are well-served by public facilities. And the sixth criteria, effect on natural environment. In this case, the reduction in parking minimums can reduce impervious surfaces and provide opportunities for additional green space, which helps to reduce stormwater runoff. And as mentioned, their meeting in September, the Planning Board voted unanimously to support the reduction of parking minimums as presented by staff and the Legislative Committee. And they offered the comprehensive plan consistency statement as shown on the screen. And they provided these points of rationale in support of that recommendation. And we also have a draft rationale for denial, if you need it. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, can we go back to the map? Yeah, no, 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 the next map, sorry, that one. So we're talking about parking in the orange area, right?
As well as the PRD conditional zoning districts, which would not be retroactive towards any PRDs, but any new PRDs would have a lower.
With regard to this, right here, if people are pushed out on the street to park, pretty soon, they're going to have to pay because most of that district is going to be paid parking. Is that right? Like, in other words, you've got a three-bedroom unit, you've got two people who are renting it. They have provided 1.5 units, 1.5 parking spaces. For whatever reason, not enough of them people live in there. Those folks realistically are going to have to park somewhere within that district. And most of that is going to be paid parking, at least during the day.
That's accurate. If someone chooses to have more vehicles than they have allotted spaces, they would then be looking, you know, for other opportunities, whether it's a monthly lease at a city-owned public parking lot, working out a deal at the bank across the street, talking to the church about potentially using their spaces, trying their hand at, you know, on-street parking. There's a variety of options out there, I believe.
I got it. I'm just pointing out, if they choose the on-street option, most of that unit, most of that, I shouldn't say unit, most of that district is going to be, they park in the street, at least during the day, they're going to have to pay.
Yeah, I believe there's some of those rates and changes to that are what's going to be considered in upcoming months.
I'll ask that the next one, as far as what time that paid parking ends, like what time you can.
Seven.
Seven. So if you came after seven and left before.
Nine.
Nine, you wouldn't have to pay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Would the requestor like to make any comments? No? Okay. All right, that's fine. Madam Attorney, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this zoning text amendment? Anyone present would like to comment? Anyone online seeking recognition?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
All right, Mr. Fitch.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. Parking is a major issue in the city. And in response, the city is engaged in a major financial commitment with the construction of the parking deck to address the situation, for which Ryan Polly is rigorously and continually engaged in the major task to keep everything in balance. We are presented with a proposal, a text amendment this evening, and it might be assumed that its immediate intention would be to facilitate a specific project or projects. And that project facilitated by the amendment might not be a big deal. But in effect, the amendment would have the potential to generate a wide range of unintended but major impacts. The text amendment would facilitate an increase in the density in the district but reduce the required parking to support this use. There would be inevitable spillover parking from two-car families, visits from family and friends, as well as deliveries and service calls, thus reducing available parking for the public. Instituting this change at a time when the parking deck functionality and its impact on the district situation in its entirety is still uncertain does raise concern for considering such a parking reduction amendment at this time. And no one is mentioning the Accousne Trail, which will have major parking impact. The influx of visitors will be huge. We are counting on it. And where will they park? Where will they park? Further, the inclusion of PRD in the amendment raises issues of concern as a PRD may be located in an area without available off-site street or alternative parking. There may not be another parking possibility in some locations. And the limited accommodations for parking for residents, visitors, and service calls render some of these developments unable to function properly. There have been many comments regarding these projects that the existing minimums are inadequate. Now beneath all this, it is unsettling to note that there's an off-stated rationale for parking reduction that often appears with the notion that in the walkable city, residents will be able to walk to shops. So there's no need to drive and thus need for parking. Indeed, there would be a reduced need for car ownership. That has been said. We can walk to shopping, we can walk to shops. We hear this again and again, but this is a distinctly urban vision that not all city residents could share. On Main Street, the reality is that the shops are primarily specialty shops or boutiques, with some exceptions, for example, Sherman's, which has proved essential for a hundred years. But the marketing thrust in the main is not to walkable infill residents. And the many shops and restaurants serve those from outside the central city core, and they need the available parking access. So what then is the walkable reality for most in the city without a car? With a reduced need to drive? So I think of this question. How many, within the sound of my voice, walk to a grocery store? Now, with the exception of the mayor, whom I have actually seen walking to a grocery store, but even the mayor, a legendary walker, has been seen driving a car. So will the residents in the critical core area walk to the grocery store? Yes, we have the complex of groceries in the Southern Flood District. But how many have actually made that walk? That is not a leisurely stroll, carrying groceries and lugging a grocery cart. You have to be sure-footed with aggressive traffic inches away. And inevitably, you will have to negotiate an elevation during your walk. And it's a city of four seasons. When it is 86 degrees and blazing hot, your ice cream will not survive the trip. And when it rains, as it does, and floods. Well, Mike Kupman is a wonderful guy, one of the most beloved staff persons in the city, but he will not be transporting people back and forth in his kayak, especially with a load of groceries. It is not going to happen. And what about for other supplies? Are we going to walk to Walmart and survive? Or walk to the post office in the mall without some anxiety-rendering measure? The walkability alternative to the parking situation is not real. People drive cars. This is a mountain town, and provision for parking is essential. However, if it is a desire that an urban metropolis, the New Asheville, or something similar is the future vision for the city, it should have a dedicated planning framework as this would be a major change in vision that should not be generated by incremental text amendments based on assumptions not fully committed but not fully realized. Reducing required parking for increased density at the moment at this time seems ill-advised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? If they're here or online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll close that public hearing. Counsel, comments?
Just like one comment.
Yeah.
And that is, one of the things Mr. Fitch said that I totally agree with, and that is, we're going to be driving cars for a long time. So to think it's all walkability is just not realistic. But I will say this, with regard to the PRD, the one advantage of that one is you can park in the street. So if you're in a residential neighborhood, the streets are designed that if you can't park in your driveway, you can park on the street. So I do think that we're covered as far as parking there. But the other side of it is, if developers don't put enough parking, then they can't find renters or owners, and that'll be their problem to figure out. But they'll be paying to park on the avenues and on Main Street from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Okay, were there questions or comments?
I will say, in 2000, when I was in grad school, so that's, you know, like 22 years ago roughly, I lived in downtown Davenport, Iowa, and I lived in a condo in downtown Davenport, Iowa. And there was only paid parking where we lived. We had to either, and parking was not supplied by our rental. And so we had to purchase parking passes in the city of Davenport, Iowa, 22 years ago. So, you know, property in downtown is valuable. And, you know, people who live and rent in kind of more downtown areas are typically used to having to supply their own parking or get it. And it is market-driven. So again, if a developer is building something and they're not selling or they're not renting, they adapt, you know, their product to accommodate to the market. So this isn't all about just eliminating cars. It's just eliminating the need to supply parking to people who are renting or buying places who may otherwise be able to purchase parking. That's all.
Other comments? I tend toward the feeling that the market should decide what, how much parking they need. As was mentioned, if they don't supply the appropriate parking, then they may not be able to rent out their properties. So I think they would take that into consideration. Any further comments or would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council adopted ordinance amending official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, Article 5, Zoning District Classification, Section 5-6-3.1 and Section 5-14-6.7 and Article 6, General Provisions, Section 16 dot Off-Street Parking Standards based on the recommendation modifications to the petition as presented by staff and based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comprehensive Plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the petition aligns with the goal LU10 of the Land Use and Development Chapter, which calls for maintaining a highly urban pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design, we find this petition, in conjunction with the recommendations presented by staff, to be reasonable and the public interest based on the information from the public and the staff analysis because the amendments align with minimum parking requirements for C1 and PRD zoning districts with other residential mixed-use parking standards. The amendments reduce costs associated with and restrictions for residential development in downtown and along thoroughfares. Residential developments and utilization of underutilized properties within these areas is desired. Amount of parking needed for development is market-driven. A significant amount of public and private parking spaces are available within the C1 zoning district. Reduction of minimum parking spaces requirements reduces the need for individually-owned surface parking lots. Century-located consolidated parking locations are preferred over individually-owned surface parking lots as a means of protecting and advancing walkability and better utilizing land within downtown core.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this zoning text amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, the motion carries and that change has been made. Thank you. Next, we have a zoning text amendment, multifamily on Seventh Avenue. Where are you going?
I slightly overlooked this one.
Get some cake if you leave, yes, please get some cake.
The applicant has requested that this be deferred to next month to give additional time to continue the conversation with the Downtown Advisory Board. So if you would accommodate by opening the public hearing and continuing it to next month, that'll give us more time to work on that one.
We will do that. Going to make the presentation first?
We can hold the presentation. I wanted to make sure that, you know, the information was available to you now so you could begin to review it. But I don't think we need to go through the full presentation at this point.
I think that's fine to have the presentation as part of the public hearing at the next meeting.
All right. We will do that in that case. Madam Attorney, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am, it has.
We will open this public hearing for a zoning text amendment. And if someone would like to move?
Move to continue, is that the right term?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that we continue this public hearing until the November regular scheduled City Council meeting.
At 5:45.
At 5:45 p.m.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of continuing this public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, and we will take this up then next month. Thank you. All right.
It's time for a cake break.
You want a cake break?
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
All right, we'll take a five-minute cake break.
No, 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 I was kidding.
No, I have to go to the bathroom.
Oh, okay. I was kidding. Okay, come on, gang, let's get some cake.
We will call this meeting back to order. New business, American Rescue Plan appropriations.
Mayor Volk, members of City Council, at your second monthly meeting in September, staff presented recommendations regarding funding, how to use your $2 million that is available as part of ARP funding for the funds of nonprofit projects. As I would just repeat, that we had about 18 applications over, that totaled over 18, excuse me, over $8 million. Staff reduced that in our first ranking to $4.7 million. And then the city manager, I took it upon myself to then narrow it down to the last two million, strictly as a recommendation, begin the discussion associated with how to utilize this funding. You see our request in the top eight, as well as my recommendation for discussion on the far right. And so I won't go any farther unless there's questions. I think at this point, it's opportunity for council to have discussions. I realize, and then we'll make a suggestion for a motion or what we do after you have your discussion at the end. So I'll stop right there.
Okay. Who wants to start this off?
I will go ahead. I had, since we last met, I had a conversation with a representative from Safelite. And I spoke to them because they submitted a couple of applications, one of them being for the Sane program. And after speaking with them, I would like to suggest that we take the initial recommendation from John of the $20,000 for their intern program, move it to the Sane program, and then move $30,000 from the HAC recommendation to the Sane program. So that would change housing assistance to $330,000 and the Sane program to $50,000. And I would also, I know we can write it in a certain way. So I did talk to them about how we felt that program was a countywide program and that we needed some other players to be in that program as well, and that they were comfortable with us making it contingent upon them getting other funding coming in.
Anyone else?
Yes, the recommendation that I, well, what I'm going to make is, although it's not listed up there, but TruRidge, their proposal was to use $50,000 to hire social worker slash interpreter, and that that person would be available to nonprofits across the county. At least that's my understanding for it. And I think, while I think the interpreter or translator is specifically for Spanish, and we do have other languages that are spoken, that is the most predominant non-English language that's spoken. And, you know, nonprofits cannot always go out and hire a translator. And while certainly you would like to hire people who are fluent, it helps to have people who, I'm thinking in Spanish, it helps to have people who are native speakers to speak to folks, especially because often they are, let's be honest, people that get taken advantage of. So my recommendation is to fund their request of $50,000 for that position and reduce our position by $50,000. And city manager has assured me that that does not destroy that position at all. Obviously, it affects the funding going out several years, but we would still be able to hire that position that we talked about, the crisis response advocate.
I do support the city position, but I kind of feel like we were saying we were going to contribute $2 million to the nonprofits. And it's like we're saying, hmm, we changed our mind. We're going to keep $500,000 of it ourselves. That part bothers me. I think it's a very worthwhile position, but to use 25% of what was going to go to nonprofits, I think is too much. I would like to see this, more of that allocated to the nonprofit requests.
Do you have one to recommend? Do you have one to recommend?
I would like to see Interfaith get $100,000 of it. They're trying to expand their food program.
How long would, so if we reduce 500 to 350, that would fund us for about at least three years of that position?
Yeah, probably. I mean.
Sure?
Yeah.
Because the goal was to fund it out more than one year.
Yeah.
Any others, mayor, that you want to divvy up that up for?
That was one in particular that I was interested in. Anyone else have thoughts on those?
I mean, I did receive a comment from someone saying exactly what the mayor just And I, although the crisis response advocate position is something that I've been hoping we would do for a couple of years now, we did say that this funding would go to the I did quite like the children and family resource center application. So I don't know if we gave a little bit towards that, how much that would affect the crisis response advocate position, to take it down to, I guess, $300,000. That still would give us more than one year, right?
Yes.
So we could give 50 to the children and family resource center?
Yeah. I mean.
I hope somebody's taking notes on all these changes we're making.
We are. Because, and we're going to bring this back to you, we're going to bring this back in a resolution to you, so.
Oh, okay. So we're not voting on this tonight?
No, so.
Can we, okay, so I didn't, I didn't know, I've been locked out on my email for a couple of days now. And so I didn't realize that there was a reallocation or renegotiation of the recommended amounts. And so I guess my thing is, is you guys have talked to a couple of people of a couple of particular groups, which is great that they've reached out to you, but then what about the other groups? Because now they're left out, and I don't think that that's fair. I mean, if we're going to start reallocating money back to all of them, then, like, who's to say that we feel like just right here on the spot that this one is more important? And then, you know, if you're allocating $50,000 out of a $260,000 ask, is that going to actually do anything for the specific program that they were asking the money for? Or does that leave them just shy of being able to do anything? So then is it like, okay, well, the program that they were asking for help for, you can't fund, because now they don't have enough money to fund it, is there another program that they would, that would be better suited towards? I don't know. I feel like there's a lot of questions that I have about reallocating these monies, and I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it, but to just right now say, oh, I really like children resource, I think we should, you know, throw $50,000 their way, it doesn't seem like there's kind of a plan, but it's truly going to benefit them for what they really, really need. Because if they now know they're not going to get 260, and that's not going to fund that program, is there another program that they know, actually, if we had $30,000, we could 100% fund this program? I don't know. Maybe we could just, I hate to keep delaying it, but I also don't want to just impromptu start, you know, reallocating money that we're not really sure if it's going to benefit a specific plan. And from what I remember, it needed to be for a specific program and not just we're freely donating money to a nonprofit. So.
And we're well within our time, right? I mean, if we delay it.
So this is really local money, so you can do what you would like to do.
Okay. So we're not up in front of some time?
No, sir.
Deadline? Okay.
I did, so I've not talked to Children and Family Resource Center because that was like a thought I just had. But Safelite, I did discuss with them, because the Sane program was a much larger ask than $50,000. And so I asked if that would be enough for them to get that program started, and they did say yes.
And I know with the Sane program, this is a discussion that we've had with Henderson County DSS and the county, actually, for having Sane nurses on staff, or at least on call. And so that's like, I feel like a whole nother discussion, too, of, you know, does our local hospital staff or have at least an on-call Sane provider who can be called in? And I felt like after we had this discussion four or five years ago, that they were going to have an on-call provider. And has that changed? Or did they lose funding for it? And, you know, should we re-verify that stuff with the county and with the hospitals as well, to make sure that, you know, they do have that provider?
What are you proposing?
I need a minute, like, like a month, minute, more. I mean, there's plenty of nonprofits I love, but I don't feel like an impulsive, like, oh, I think we should do, you know, this or.
And there's no reason.
The TruRidge, the request was 50, the TruRidge one, the request was $50,000. So that's why I threw that number out, that position.
I think just looking at them, we've, we've all felt that some of them were worthwhile and that we would like to fund, fund them perhaps more than we had, than was initially proposed.
The position that city manager has proposed, maybe we should come to an agreement as far as if we agree on the position and how long we want to fund it initially. And that would at least, we'd know what money we need to free up or are available to free up based upon that.
Or if you felt like that that's, you know, something we should not fund with this money and discuss when it becomes budget time in, in the future, that's, that's your, that's your other option, is that we could, you know, just take the position out of this discussion, and you have another $500,000 to divvy up among the 18 projects that you had, so.
I think that position is really important because it addresses and encompasses so many of the asks that we've already received, which is mental health and intervention and advocacy. So I don't necessarily want to see that go away. Can you fund it for like two years for $150,000?
Probably should say $200,000. If we had, if we had $200,000.
Brian.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd say 200 is a safer bet to actually make it the two years, because you're going to have to have equipment supplies.
Looking for a bargain.
Things like.
Looking for a bargain.
And I agree, Jen, that when we first began this, we decided it was going to be transformational things, not like special appropriations. And so I agree that, you know, maybe to take that down, so we now have $300,000 to spend that we didn't have before. But the idea is, is it something that's going to change the way we, we live and our culture?
Right.
I agree with you, that is originally how we had planned to divvy this up. So we're going to come back and talk about it again in November?
Which I think also gives us time, like, I'll reach out to Children and Family Resource Center and find out more information.
So what staff will do, will take what we know so far, and so you have, and.
Do you want us to talk about the ones we've talked about and see if you should put them on the list?
Yeah, well, yes, I think, because what, you've got TruRidge and then the Sane nurses, but I know council member Hensley had questions about that one, and yes, so is it, do you want us to fund $50,000 for the Sane nurses and how much?
50.
And 50 for TruRidge? Put that on the list and then show you what you have left and then.
NIAAM.
Oh, and a hundred thousand. A hundred thousand for NIAAM.
Which would leave?
A hundred thousand. A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand. Okay. Or we can play with it again, I guess, in November if we want to, but we know that coming into the meeting.
May I make one comment? So the contracts for these are going to be different than the special appropriation contracts, and they're going to have to be tailored to fit within the legal parameters per the request. So for people who have requested capital money for capital improvements, that may have to be structured in the form of a forgivable loan to fit within the legal parameters. So bear that, bear that in mind, because you got to have some way to, also, finance director out there is going to, you know, shoot me or hug me one, but, but we got to, you know, structure the payments and how, how they're going to get the money. Are they going to get it in advance? Are they going to get it as the program? Or is it going to be contingent on there being enough money to do the program? So bear all that in mind as you're having the conversations, to ask plenty of questions.
Good point. And we'll prepare a spreadsheet showing what you see here, and maybe a spreadsheet of all the 18 requests, what the staff recommended, what the manager recommended, kind of what council's first review, and then we could just track it that way from a spreadsheet standpoint.
Okay. All right.
You got all that, Adam?
Children and Family Resource Center.
Okay.
All right. We'll bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Next request to review Noelwood and Orleans intersection.
I'll ask Public Works Director, Mr. Wooton.
Wow.
Good evening, mayor and city council. A little over a week ago, Mrs. Glassman sent you all an email about the intersection at Noelwood and Orleans Avenue requesting some improvements there due to a safety hazard. And so I just put a couple of slides together to show a couple of things that we're, we're thinking about doing. Just want to see if you all concur. Currently, we've got a 30 by 30, 30-inch by 30-inch stop sign on all four corners of that intersection. We're proposing to go with the, the next size, which is a 36 by 36 sign. And in addition to that, there are, there are stop bar, bars at each one of the stop signs, but there's a smaller size on the left, which is a 12-inch stop bar. And we're proposing to put in the, double that size and put in the 24-inch thermoplastic stop bar, which is much more visible to motorists. And here's a photo of the intersections. You can see the stop signs on all four corners, the stop bars. And so, like I said, we're proposing to make those two improvements to that intersection. She had requested a couple of other things, like rumble strips or stop, or sorry, speed humps. And we just, we don't like rumble strips because they create a lot of noise for the, the people living adjacent to that area. Same thing with speed humps, they create noise, they cause issues with snow removal, they slow down response times for police and fire. So we really don't like adding that option to the streets. The third thing that, or one of the other things that she had mentioned was putting the stop ahead letters in advance of the stop bars, and we can do that. I don't think it's effective, what we've, you know, the research that we've done is, has little effect on traffic calming, so we don't propose to install those. But if you would like us to, we can, we cannot use yellow, as she had proposed, but we can't put them in white. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or suggestions that you might have.
Are we allowed to write whatever we want on the street?
No. There's a manual.
If you want to write, please stop. You can't do this.
There's a, there's a manual, there's a guide, or it's called manual traffic, manual, uniform manual traffic control devices, I think I said that right, MUTCD. And it tells us basically what we can and cannot do, and how to do it if we choose to do something. Which is, and in that, which is why you can't put yellow, but you can put white. But you can put, like, stop, stop ahead, things like that.
I think the situation is that people know there's a stop sign, but they just ignore it.
Yep.
I don't know that a bigger stop sign would help, but we could try that.
I think it's a good effort. Those little, those little plastic dudes.
We'll try.
What are those called?
The little plastic guys that say like children?
I think those have the most effect. Those fellows, because I do, whenever I see them, I'm like.
The other, the other problem, and the picture doesn't show it, is at that spot.
It's a hill.
You have picked up speed.
Yes.
If you're going to work and you've picked up speed, and you don't see any headlights early in the morning, you just, you're, that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Because most of the time, there is not somebody else there.
What about the little strips?
The rumble strips?
Uh huh.
We can install those, but they make a lot of noise.
They do.
I will almost guarantee that the neighbors will complain about it as soon as they get put down.
And for the plows, too, to go through, it's really difficult for them.
They'll, they'll eventually scrape them off, and then you have to reapply them.
We would love it if we didn't plow that particular street as often as we do.
We delay it as long as we can.
Yes. It's a great sliding street.
I'm just kidding.
I think this is a good attempt to, you know, try to help the situation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I suppose people in the neighborhood could put signs in their yards that say, like, please stop children playing or something like, I mean, I've seen those in other neighborhoods around, if they wanted to do that.
Yeah, they can. Right?
Right.
Yeah. I've seen them around.
Yes, our limitations, our limitations are not their limitations.
That's right.
Right.
So they could get the little dudes.
Yeah.
They could get the little people.
All right. Work on getting those installed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to make this official motion?
I think we can do this by consensus.
Okay. I got to ask.
Any council member have something they want to bring up?
I have one. The chair of the Environmental Sustainability Board and I met with our representative from Ickley, which is a local government assistance focused on sustainability. We had a great meeting with him, and they're going to help us with the sustainability plan and a couple other things that will go along with that. So as, we just started the process, so as we get further into it, I'll let you guys know. But I wanted to let you know that I was pretty impressed with the, the items that they're doing, and I'm really glad that the ESB signed us up for it.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else have anything?
Me. I'd like to thank, I thank the city of Hendersonville and the Hendersonville Police Department for National Night Out on Tuesday. And I also would like it if we would keep in mind that October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Volunts Month. I am a breast cancer survivor, and I'm, but I'm good now. So just keep that in mind.
I would ask Councilmember Hensley if she wanted to bring up virtual meetings as far as, I know that she's received a call about that. I've received a call, and I think Councilmember Simpson also received a call regarding allowing, particularly for subcommittee meetings, to, to use virtual resources, technology to hold those meetings. When the council previously discussed this, we, the conversation was that we'd not allow any virtual meetings, but I think from a practical standpoint, for subcommittees, and I don't want to speak too much, but let the council talk about this, but we've received it based on subcommittee work, particularly in the downtown group with the planning department, or excuse me, community development, and maybe even S, ESB, they would like to have the option to use virtual technology to, to have those meetings. So I'll stop right there and see if they, any other comments.
Yeah, I just, you know, while I always think that in-person meetings are the most efficient way to do business, and I, I don't want to see like the actual board meetings change from in-person, but for the subcommittees, you know, these, again, these are volunteers who are volunteering their time. And, you know, if you're on a board and then you're on a couple of extra subcommittees, you know, the time and the expense and gas and time out of work becomes, you know, cost prohibitive. And, you know, I want to just be respectful of the people who volunteer their time already. So if we can just agree that for subcommittees, that we would allow them to continue meeting virtually to conduct that business, but then, you know, require the in-person meetings for the board meetings, I would appreciate that.
I'm going to look to the city attorney and see if she has any concerns, comments about that.
I would like to put together some guidelines that they have to follow if they do that because open meetings law is always, you know, a concern. And so I think I could do that, put that in a resolution for you guys on consent, just put in what the requirements of the open meetings law are, and that that would be, give them some guidance on what they need to do.
That's perfect.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? City manager report, anything?
Just again, thank you for the wonderful cake and recognition. I appreciate it very much, appreciate the support.
You are welcome. Closed session.
We have a motion, I think, that we would put on the screen, maybe.
Are we changing it?
We change, we changed it from there. We added a number, so.
That's not the most recent one.
That's, it's not the most recent one?
We republished the agenda yesterday.
We did?
Did you upload the new one, John?
I just looked at the city site.
I thought it did.
Into their, into the folder?
I put it in the folder, Brian. Sorry, I put it in city council folder, sorry.
It's not going to be me.
Oh, so it's in, so it's in SharePoint?
I mean, Jerry looks like he's ready to do it, so I'm going to let him do it.
We just need to add A3, consult with the attorney.
Problem is, they changed it where you can't, I can't.
Oh, so it should be 1, 3, and 6?
1, 4.
There it is.
1, 3, 4.
Yeah, I'm sure, read that.
Yeah. Zoom that in.
Just give it a minute.
I can read that.
Yeah. All right, there you go.
Madam Mayor, I'm with the city council in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318-118, 1, 3, 4, and 6. To prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries and businesses in the area served by the public body, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, and character, fitness conditions of an individual public officer, to consult with an attorney retained or employed by the city council, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss a claim or pending claim of, or potential litigation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.